Good evening.
Hudsonville City Commission, dated September 10th, 2024. I am Mayor Mark Northrup. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Here. Now is a moment of silence. Are there any suggestions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'd like a moment of silence for our loyal city employees and staff that give their time and their labor and their loyalty to those of us up here on the commission. So let's have a moment of silence for those at service. Thank you. Now is a moment for public comments. Are there members from the public that would like to address the commission tonight that's not on the agenda?
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you please announce your name, your address, for the record?
Gladly. My name is Derek Dahlman. My address is 10470 Sunset Lane, and I live in Olive Township. And I'm here to speak with all of you, and I appreciate you giving me a few moments of your time tonight. I'm here because I'm running for Ottawa County Probate Judge this year, replacing Judge Fein, who announced that he is retiring. That's a nonpartisan position, so fortunately I was able to avoid some of the excitement this past August. But the time is quickly closing in. So a little bit about my legal experience and then some background about me. I am a former Ottawa County prosecutor. I handled felonies, misdemeanors, juvenile delinquency matters, mental commitment proceedings. Anything that came through that office was something that I handled. I'm currently a litigator at Cunningham Dahlman in Holland. I'm also a deputy city attorney for the city of Holland, so I work with boards similar to you. I did city council last week, actually. I wear many different hats as a litigator. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I'm a real estate litigator, probate litigation. I'm court-appointed now to represent individuals who are subject to the mental health treatment orders, civil litigation, and then again the municipal stuff that I do for the city. I'm an ordinance prosecutor, so I am both a prosecutor and a defense attorney at the same time. I know that sounds weird, but I actually think that's exactly the type of balance that a judge should have, and I'm well-versed in looking at cases from both sides, which is kind of the job that I'm seeking. Specifically to the probate court, a lot of people hear that term, don't really know what it means, think about wills, trusts, estates, and certainly that's part of it. But it's really the court that serves our community in ways that the others don't. So those mental health treatment orders that I spoke of, that I've done as a prosecutor and on behalf of those individuals, that happens in the probate court. Recovery court, that takes place in the probate court, getting individuals who suffer from addiction the tools that they need to succeed, but also holding them accountable. The juvenile delinquency matters, which again I've handled from both sides, happen in the probate court. So much of what goes on there is something that I've done from both sides, in addition to the probate litigation. Personally, a little bit about me, I grew up in west Michigan. I'm kind of a country boy through and through, still am, live in Olive Township. I was in 4H FFA growing up. Now that I'm a, you know, in the professional world, I have the opportunities to support those programs. And a couple weeks ago, had the opportunity to purchase a hog from one of our young 4Hers at the Hudsonville Fair. I've done that for a couple years now. I'm deeply involved in my community. I'm a youth sports coach, have been for several years, for anything that is needed for flag football, T-ball, wrestling. I've never wrestled, but they needed it, so I tried. Fortunately, I don't think I screwed up too bad. And then this year, in addition to campaigning and being an attorney, I'm also the head coach of my son's tackle football team. So I keep busy and I keep active with the kids. I'm also deeply involved in a group called Michigan Outdoor Wishmakers, which I know one of you is familiar with. We had the pleasure of meeting several months back. We take youth and young adults who suffer from disability and illness on hunting and fishing trips to empower them, show them they can do things they never thought they could. Truly, I think they impact us a little bit more than we do them. And we also do the same for veterans, to thank them for their service. So being involved with these folks, a lot of which are folks that will come through the probate court, is truly something I live and do every day, inside and outside of my job, and that's why I'm running. So I would ask for your support this November. Again, nonpartisan portion of the ballot. I do have some materials here if anybody's interested afterwards. I can pass them out. I'll stick around. I like watching the municipal stuff happen. And I do have yard signs. Some of you may have seen them already, the ones I'm looking to get rid of. Don't have my mug on them, so that wouldn't be in your front yard every day. But I appreciate your time, guys, I really do, and thank you for what you're doing for your community as well.
Any questions for the council?
No. No. So Gordon Cunningham? I'm the Dahlman side, but I'm actually not related to that Dahlman either. I just, I happen into something good there, yeah.
Anything else? If you could leave your handouts with the clerk and make sure we all get them.
Sure. Gladly. Perfect.
And certainly if you want to just leave a couple of signs here, I'm sure they'll disappear with somebody.
All right, I can do that. Thank you so much.
And you're not by any stretch obligated to hang around.
I truly like to, because I can see what's going on everywhere else that I'm not every day, so thank you.
I'd like to move on to the consent agenda items. There are six. City Commission Special Session dated August 13th, Regular Session dated August 13th, Special Session August 27th, Work Session September 3rd, Zoning Board of Appeals dated August 20th, and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated August 21st. Are there any changes to those consent agenda items as recommended by the commissioners? You all read them? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent agenda items carried. Thank you. Moving on to new business. August Public Safety, SEDISCAL Reports. Chief, you're up.
Good evening. I have a report in there for the month of August. We had 58 calls for service, so an average month. That brought our total for the year at the end of the month to 489. And if you're keeping tally to date, tonight we just had number 508. So we're actively running calls every day. So some days are two or three. Today was three again, so very busy with that. We did have a couple of, not really big calls, but calls that took a little bit more of the resources. One was the Thursday night of the week of the fair, where there was an incinerator that was loaded improperly, and it started smoking up not only the building, but... Wasn't you? And it wasn't the 4th of July, so you're safe. But anyway, thankfully it didn't turn out to be much, so. And there were no calls on Elm Street once again this month. Is that good? And our biggest event of the month was obviously the week of the fair. We spent many hours there on standby at the first aid station, and then we also had equipment and manpower in the arena for five of the six nights. So it was a busy week. It was a good week. We had a good time. We had great weather. Questions?
I see you have a posting on the board up on 32nd for a hire?
We do. So right now, we have two cadets. We have a third that's in the process of going through preliminary before onboarding, which is encouraging and exciting. Three cadets is maybe a little heavy at times, but we're willing to work through that. Indications are if everything goes according to plan, we will have all three enrolled in first responder class yet this fall. They would graduate the medical side of that by the end of the year, and then January they would start into fire academy. And fire academy will run through May, so we have the potential of three additional firefighters by next summer, mid-year next year. So a lot of work's gone into that, looking at different ways to advertise. Andrea and Tyler have been supportive in everything that they do, and the sign is a part of that. That's how a couple of them have found us. So continue with that, along with the newsletter and some of the PR events that were out coming up on Urban Hay Day, we'll continue to advertise. So our numbers are gaining, and we're happy with that.
Go ahead.
Yep. So their numbers have been kind of floating around a little bit with that range of 79%, 80%, 81% compliance. And compliance just means that they hit the mark where there's an industry standard of how soon they get there. They actually did better on the slower response calls that month, and they did worse on the higher priority calls. You can see that in the, the red numbers are at 61%, and that's not great. So we are in the process between Georgetown, Jamestown, Hudsonville, Belandon. We're going to have a meeting with Life and kind of talk through what are you doing? What steps are you taking to make these numbers a little better than what they are? So looking at it, working through it, every time that you, they try something, it takes a little time to figure out if it works. When I say things that they look at, where to stage units, what time of day, when to have multiple units on in the area, because they never know. They can get hammered with calls in a particular area, or a multi-car accident can take three of their units away, and that's unforeseen. But, yeah, working together, trying to figure it out.
Thank you. Don't be afraid to remind them that they have their garage in our city. We went to great lengths to secure them.
They do. They're not going to go anywhere. They're going to stay here. They are committed to the area. We just have to work through to make sure that they have someone in the city as much, or in the area as much as they can. On the good side of that, we have very well-trained, experienced people who are given wonderful patient care until they get there. So that's, that's the good side. The bad side is we'd like to move just a little quicker, so we'll work on that.
Tyler and I were at State of the City for Walker today, and one of the comments that came up was they have equipped all their police cars with the chest compressors.
Yeah.
And they have...
Lucas. The Lucas.
And that they, that was an item of discussion at the State of the City about valuable piece of equipment that's become for them and their community.
Yep. It's amazing how when that technology came out, it was unattainable at first, and now it's become standard, standardized. And yes, they have them in all their fire trucks and in all their police cars now.
And we have one, right?
We have one.
Is that enough?
It's not. So it's one of the things that we have to work towards. We are always looking to step our game up and achieve, and it's things, we can make a list long of the things that we want. We just have to make sure we put things on the right priority, the right order, and then work through it. So we'll get there.
Good. Anything else for the chief? Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. And August was good for us as well. 256 calls, I think that's one of the highest months in the last three years, so calls are going for us as well. Obviously, last month was, we were really tied up with the fair as well. It was great weather, huge turnout. It was great to see so many people come to our city for some fun, and clean fun. So, but yeah, we were there, we committed a ton of time to that, and it was a lot of fun. So also during August, we, before school started, we did a cram the cruiser event, which was cramming multiple cruisers with school supplies through Meyer. So we solicited people at the doors, and many people came back out with school supplies, and we filled many vehicles with school supplies. So those were all handed out to area schools, so it was really good. Lots of meetings for planning for stuff that's upcoming, between the parade and Urban Hay Day, and lots going on, so it's been fun. Any questions at all?
Chief, Sergeant, something's come up here, just a lot of discussion offline with the commissioners about, do you invoice all the overtime to the fair for the deputies? So we don't absorb any of that, correct?
Already done. Yep. They sign contracts. I mean, before I even put out the overtime, I have to have signed contracts from them. So they sign the contracts, and we invoice them for it. So you didn't pay any, you guys didn't pay any overtime, so.
Anything else for Jeff? Hearing none, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Emergency management, Dave, good evening.
Good evening. A couple things to highlight. Of course, one of them is the fair, our big event for the year. Went well. We had a couple changes, partly due to the fair board decided to repurpose one of the parking lots, so that changed our traffic patterns a bit. It went well, actually made one of the traffic points a little easier. And, but we will have more changes, I think, next year, now that we've seen how that worked the first time. So always, we're changing something every year to make it just a little bit better, and this year was no exception. But yeah, the team logged a lot of hours, and we had a lot of turnout from the department. Something I wanted to highlight, so there was a power line mentioned on there that, and I think I said in there that a few of us responded, we left one team member on scene. Reading it now, it doesn't mean four of us gathered and we drew straws and we had the short straw state all night, right? We have a rotation plan. Basically, what we do is we figure, okay, who's going to respond in what order? And then we base our on scene for two hours at a time, and at the end of the two hours, if Consumers isn't there yet, the person calls the next person in line, wakes them up, and they, and we kind of rotate through that way. In this case, Consumers was there in just over an hour, so we didn't have to go through that rotation. But yeah, it wasn't Orin hanging out all night. It was, just happened to be that it got resolved quickly. And we have a new hire. So we're up to our full plan. We're twelve of us. Paul Smith joined us just in time to help out at the fair. We got him on-boarded and did some quick traffic direction training the week before the fair. Didn't take a lot of training, because he has served in two previous law enforcement departments, Kent County and Ottawa County, so he's not unfamiliar with being out there in the road. But he's working out well so far, just with our experience with him at the fair. Any questions or comments?
Hearing none, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Have a great week. Moving on to Traffic Control Order, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve temporary Traffic Control Order Number 24-02 for partial room closures on downtown orders to include Curry Street, School Ave., Central Boulevard, Plaza Ave., and Allen Street for the attached map on October 12th, 2024, and by noon, 4:00 PM.
It's been moved and supported. Do you have any comments here, city manager or Jeff?
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything you have.
Is this the same one as previous year?
It's really close, it's a touch different, but nothing as far as logistics is going to change. One of the biggest things is we've got to keep the post office open, so that's going to work this way as well, so. But they did, they changed the layout just a touch in the rides for the wagon hay rides, but it's, all will be encompassed in the same area, so it should be pretty smooth.
Is the social district being active for Urban Hay Day?
Oh, yeah. 24/7/365, huh?
Not exactly, yeah.
Close. Any questions for Sergeant? Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a, can I do a voice on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the traffic order passes. Thank you. Moving on to the City Treasurer's monthly report for the month of August.
Okay. As you can see, our reserve threshold, we're back over that as expected from August, so we're at 62% of a reserve threshold of 25% by policy. So we're back in line with the board policy of that. Got some line graphs for Dave, switched up on the bar graph here. Oh, with the grant spreadsheet, it was after we compiled that, but Jill actually received a $10,000.
You got the grant? That was quick.
Yeah, so that's really great news. $10,000 more dollars that the city doesn't have to spend on equipment that we need. So, yeah, those are really good news. I'm open for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, time, Mike.
Go ahead.
I think the fire chief has something he'd like to come up here and discuss with the city commission that may or may not have been entered in the grant spreadsheet, and I may or may not, I mean, not. But he'll explain to us.
Yeah, and I'm going to take the credit for this, and Andrew did all the work. The state of Michigan had a grant opportunity for full-time firefighters who would get a second set of gear, or a set of gear, which would be their second. And we applied for it, Andrew actually did all the work, applied for it. We got turned down originally, and that was because the state of Michigan said, this is for full-time firefighters, and if you have a pay-down call department with a full-time chief, you don't get one. Well, that created a little uproar in the state, and they rethought their decision. They came back and they said, no, we're going to do it. So they allocated another, like, $71,000, of which we were notified we were going to get $3,500. And I'm not sure if you updated the spreadsheet, I didn't get a chance to yet, so it may or may not be on there, but that is coming. So it's a set of turnout here for me, so that takes me out of the rotation of the guys, which is great. We have money budgeted to buy one a year. Last year, we were able to get two due to a grant. This year, we have budgeted one. We still have a grant application out there for a second, and then mine would be a third. So every little bit helps. So thanks to Andrew for doing that.
Thank you, Chief.
Great news, well done. Thank you. Anything else for the treasurer, or any other comments on the grant spreadsheet? I don't know what the rest, you ever just find that useful to take a look at, realize how valuable our staff is, what they bring to the table. Moving on to payment of the bills, is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $837.35, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
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 Aye. Moving on to ACH fund distribution, is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the fund distributed via automated clearance, in the amount of $8,608,916.76, which are distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Andrew, this is the largest amount I've ever seen, I think.
Yes, tax collection was $8.5 million of that, $8.6 million.
And last year was what? Do you know what the comparison was?
I was not here yet, so no.
I don't think it was quite this big.
No. And that's all the tax money going out, so that's none of our money.
For the schools predominantly?
Predominantly the school, but there was another bond on there, I believe, this year, right? Was there recently put a bond?
Okay.
Yeah, so the bond and the school taxes and everything else coming.
And we're satisfied the distribution on the ACH is secure now? There were some issues there a few months back? We...
Yes, it's all secure. We have a process in place for what happened about a couple months ago, and so we have a process in place to make sure that everything is checked and verified before we make any updates ACH.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
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 Andrew?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to the flat roof on Gary Biker Memorial Library, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize Great League Systems to replace the flat roof on the Gary Biker Memorial Library Building in the amount of $57,596.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. I know Mike's just dying to talk about a roof. Huh?
I'm glad to go on.
When and details, maybe, just a little bit?
Well, we don't, we don't have a schedule yet, because we didn't have a final approval yet. So the contractor that we selected is Great League Systems. They're a local contractor. I don't know if you noticed, but we did have 12 bids that came in on this, so I'm very happy with that. The bids came in very good for our numbers that we were planning on, so. But the contractor is very excited to get going. We really, really are pushing to make sure that we have this done before the snow flies. So that's our, that is our goal, but they are, they have other jobs that they have to do. Tomorrow, I will be in contact with them, hopefully, and we can get that scheduled in, so I move forward from that.
Over or under budget?
What's that?
Over or under budget?
Under, substantially. Yep.
Well, they got lucky for a change, huh?
Yeah. We moved, the roof was originally scheduled to be replaced next fiscal year, but with the shape that it's in, and the problems that we were having over there, we moved it up a year, so that helped.
Good. Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Andrew?
Yes. Moving on to Item 14, Grand Valley Metro Council Resolution, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number 42 to the GDMC Art Council Corporation to add Blendon Township as a member of the community.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Tyler, you want to speak to this?
Yeah. I attended the Grand Valley Metro Council Executive Board meeting last week, and it was an opportunity to increase the membership by adding when the township brings more folks, more funding to the pot. And frankly, with it being one of our next-door neighbors, allows them to take advantage of additional opportunities when it comes to road systems and infrastructure. With the way the bylaws of the Grand Valley Metro Council are written, each municipality that makes up the Grand Valley Metro Council must pass a resolution with timing picked. So somewhere, when we removed the City of Hastings last year, we'll be adding Blendon Township this summer there.
So Hastings fell off, and Blendon was not a member.
But was not a member?
I'm kind of surprised at that. Any other questions for Tyler on the resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Item 15, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-1001, authorizing the execution of a first amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. I'd just like to comment to everybody, I appreciate your support on this amendment to his contract. It was a lot of effort on quite a few people. It's been reviewed at least two or three times by the city attorney. I'm confident that this was clearly the right decision. It will be made part of the packet, the archive. So I appreciate everybody's support in this, and I think it was the right decision for the city of Hudsonville. Any other questions on that or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, city commissioner.
Before I ask for the city manager's board, I just have a few comments. I'll be leaving early for Mackinaw. I plan to be up there by 1:30. I just want to remind everybody, there's a dress code in the Grand Hotel of a coat and tie. That's what it reads, so can you check? No, it said tie.
It did.
It did.
In the past? I asked the mayor if we could wear it.
It does say necktie, but a necktie couldn't worn.
If you have a bolo, maybe you want to wear a bolo, I don't know. So tomorrow night, there is the Fleece and Vandal Brink Social. Would like to see as many of us there. Now, Dave, are you going? Jeremy's not. Dave, are you going? Jeremy's not. Larry, Dan, and Jack. So we, they'll be the four of us. Nice to see all four of you there. I would ask that the five, six of us that are attending with Tyler, if, if prior to the weekend, you could just shoot Tyler maybe two or three takeaways from the, from the, the event, what your observations were, and he can maybe just roll it up into kind of maybe a memo of what we got out of it, because it does represent some, some expense and investment by the community. So I think we're kind of obligated to have at least a couple of takeaways and deliver those to Tyler and have you roll those up. You, you okay with that?
Yeah, I love that. If you could, if you could email them to me.
Yeah, just, just email them, Tyler. So no, no hard requirements here, but if we all walk away with something, and then we don't, if we don't remember it, come Monday, we forget about it. But I think it helps for us to, to quantify and qualify a little bit of some of our observations from that. There is a social bowling event Monday at six P.M. It is a social event. I would just make sure everyone understands that it is not a quorum, and there shouldn't be no discussion about city business or politics at a social event to celebrate our bowling alley's new ownership. So I look forward to everybody being there. We'll have two lanes, and we'll see who can outball me. Did you take bowling in college?
I did not.
Okay. I took, I took bowling in college, and I think that was the last time I bowled. So, but I look forward to having everybody, everybody there. It should be kind of a, it's just a real fun event. Just show up if you don't want to bowl, that's fine, too. Tyler and I were, like I mentioned earlier, we attended the Walker State of the City today. Very interesting. I think that's something we may be looking to generate in the city of Hudsonville, to do some kind of a state of the city. I think it's important that we have a moment as leaders to recognize some of our accomplishments over the year. So it's something Tyler and I have been talking about for quite a while. So I would welcome your ideas if you think that's something appropriate, and what your ideas will be on it. But I think it's, I've been a couple now in, in West Michigan, and I have to say, I think that does bring some value to, to stand in front of your city and state that. If we do that, that would probably be in the beginning of twenty, twenty-five. The only last thing I have to add, if everybody would look under their chairs, the commissioners?
No, it's not a setup. Everybody get the brick? Okay. This is not a brick in the wall. This is not Pink Floyd, but these are historic bricks from one of our distressed pieces of property that was demolished last week. And I had the foresight, when I drove by there, I couldn't resist but stop to make sure we picked some bricks up as a piece of memorabilia for all the commissioners, for all our labor and effort we went to to see the city in transition start to happen here. It was a big demolition. It was, I was glad to see the building come down, and I'll be even more glad to see something new come up. So those are your bricks to take home. I ask that we not throw those through a window. If you want to throw them in the pond, I'm okay with that. So that is the gift we leave you and a piece of memorabilia.
And with that, I'll turn this over to Tyler to give the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick updates. Just a reminder, the Prospect Flats ribbon cutting is scheduled for September nineteenth at ten A.M. Thirty-two, thirty-three Prospect Street. I was promised by the developer that there would be shovels and hard hats for us to wear. So if you're available, we'd love to see you there. The Buttermilk Creek bathrooms are on schedule for completion in October. Dare say they're ahead of schedule, but they might be ahead of schedule. If you haven't driven by, see the progress they made, it's pretty cool. Definitely be a positive impact for our park system. As you may be aware, the Berry Street realignment is underway. You can see the footprint of where the new portion of Berry Street will be constructed. Several trees have been removed. The clearing has exposed the, the footprint of the future road. We will need to remove a couple more trees than necessary. The drain commissioner's easement to ensure safety for traffic turning right out of the newly constructed Berry Street. So we'll be working with Commissioner Bush there. Terror Station is working towards obtaining the necessary permits prior to, prior to the closing of property. I have been notified, and you've heard this before, that we are expecting a word from MISTUP with regards to the brownfield plan approval here in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully we'll have another exciting announcement, and ribbon cutting coming up soon. Please, and continue to keep your fingers crossed. The Hudsonville Beautiful Fair was very well attended. Having married into someone who is part of the fair culture, it is new to me, but I'm continually impressed with the fair, from the vendors to the rides, to the food. Just well done all around, very clean. Want to give kudos out to the fire department, the EOC, and the Marion County Sheriff's Department. Utmost professionals, well organized, and we're very fortunate to have them. It's Marion County. That is south of us. This, we're in Ottawa County, it's a theory in that Ottawa County. Thank you. There are different counties. Ottawa County is north of Marion County, where we all are in the city of Hudsonville. You're welcome to, if you want to say my apologies.
That will come back.
Yes, I will. But kudos to our team. Very well done. It's, it's pretty remarkable how they planned, and just, I really have positive things, so thank you, gentlemen. The second round of economic development director interviews were held yesterday. We had final two candidates. Looking forward to announcing some good news shortly with regards to that, and get the new individual here and hit the ground running. As Mayor Northrup mentioned, we do have the MML Annual Convention tomorrow through Friday in Mackinac Island. A great opportunity for collaboration among elected officials, leaders of various communities. I had an opportunity to check out the agenda, the breakout sessions, seen in line quite a bit with some things that we're doing. And so really look forward to attending the conference and bringing some tips and tricks home to the city of Hudsonville. Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned some ACH concerns.
Not concerns, observations.
Yeah, no, fair enough. But these are struggles that the private sector and the public sector has dealt with, with hackers, for lack of a better term, trying to infiltrate our systems. Andrew and I have been working on, I started, passed the baton to Andrew, but we're going to be looking to bring in multi, multi-factor authentication to our city systems and computers. Adds another level of security in there. I did talk to my colleagues in Granville and Hastings, and they already have various systems implemented. And as such, look forward to working with DuPont and having this implemented to ensure additional security, especially as it relates to our to-do sharing programs. Second to last, Master Plan Steering Committee met last week. McKenna is doing a great job leading the conversation. The folks that we have in that room, planning and zoning, and just everyone is part of that. I want to just be at it. A high level of discussions taking place. Really looking at current users, future uses, and sometimes we leave the room with more questions than we do answers, but we're constantly working towards ensuring that the next master plan represents the vision and the direction for the city in the future. The Parks and Rec plan, the working draft is nearly complete. The Parks and Rec folks, myself, along with Mayor Northrup, have continuously looked at that plan, and we're near, we're getting to a point where we'll be bringing it to the appropriate bodies for approval. And then finally, just want to say that I appreciate the city commission, the discussion that we had last week with regards to the closing of the fiscal year. Andrew Smith, the finance director, great job laying out necessary information. Eppertford bar graphs versus line graphs, Andrew, if you're asking. Apparently different commissioners' thoughts, you know, trip line in this space. But I thought it was a good discussion, and from where I sit, the more knowledgeable our elected officials are in understanding really the ins and outs of, of the budget, it really makes staff, myself, our job easier, because we're on the same page in understanding, or when things are recommended, we understand the financial impacts, whether it's revenues or expenditures. So really appreciate everyone taking the time, and Mr. Mayor, your leadership there, and, you know, getting that group together to speak to it. And Andrew, thank you for your efforts there. And then finally, very appreciative of the amendment to my contract. I continue to enjoy working here. From the elected officials to the staff, very fortunate to find myself in such a warm and welcoming community, but equally coming to work every day to work alongside some of the best public servants that I've met. And I can easily just say that. It's not words. I've worked in the public sector off and on since I was sixteen, and we have a great group of people all around here. And that's a testament to, to everyone here, and I'm very fortunate. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions or comments, that concludes our management.
Are you still a Buckeye fan?
I am more than a Buckeye fan. I don't know what words I can use to describe it, but yes. I knew that before you hired me. I come over two times in my interview. Wish I've always, thank you. Yes, I am still a fan of Buckeyes.
Thank you, Tyler. Tobin?
Thank you for the brick, Mark. It's, it is important reminder that with all the fun and forward focus, focusing improvements and energy that we have, if we did look back, it was the past, and what we're doing in our jobs well. So thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge a resident that, well, not resident here, but a guest that came in midway through the meeting. Happens to be a former commissioner for the city of Madison. Mr. Tom Richard, who happens to be my father-in-law, and wanted to see how we do commission here in Hudsonville. So thanks to him for taking the time to come.
Dad, you want to come up and say a few words?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, I think I'm okay.
Jeremy?
I don't want to embarrass him. I was told that when I left. He hates myself.
I would just like to apologize for that.
That's the worst you've ever done here? You're in pretty good shape, Jeremy. Counselor? Larry?
Oh, that is interesting, Buckeye. I have a friend that spent many, many years working there with Mr. Lichten, and that is a one of the historic buildings in the building.
Yeah?
Yeah, also thank you for the brick. As I mentioned a couple of months ago, I took my grandson through a tour of DBW, and he got to see all of the trucks and the plows, and he's just absolutely fascinated with construction equipment. So I was able to take him down on three of her days and watch as he, one of my favorite words of his, excavator, he called it. And we watched him tear down, we sat at the church across the street on their steps and watched him tear down the building for probably a total of over three days, probably a total of three, three and a half hours. Just, he was just asking questions and pointing and just in awe. So that was a really, really good time for me, as opposed to him. Awesome. Thanks.
Jack? Andrew? Jill?
We are scheduled for September twenty-third again.
New audio? Thank you. Anything else needs to come for the commission? Any comments? Hearing none. We are adjourned.